...order the March 31st, 2015, meeting of the Saverill Board of Education. Everybody please stand for pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting has been advertised according to the Open Public Meeting Act. Yes, to that, Mr. McEnamn. Your roll call, please.
Mr. Balka.
Here.
Mrs. Pako.
Here.
Mrs. Bloom.
Here.
Mr. Brzezinski.
Here.
Mr. Syak.
Here.
Mrs. DePinto.
Here.
Mrs. Trapp.
Here.
Mr. Walsh.
Here.
And Mr. McEnamn.
I make a motion that the resolution for executive be read and the board retire into executive session.
Second.
Can you read the resolution, please?
Whereas Section 80 of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, P.L. 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of Roseville County, Middlesex State, and New Jersey as follows: The public shall be excluded from discussion of and reaction upon the herein after specified subject matters; general nature of the subject matters to be discussed is as follows: Personnel, including but not limited to agenda items, attorney-client privilege, various legal issues associated with the Saverill War Memorial High School Football Program, and student discipline, and also sale of merchandise, student discipline hearing, and negotiations summer hours.
Through the chair, if I could also, Mr. DeAndrea, propose Attorney-client advice regarding Roberts versus the Saverill Board of Education.
I was excluding that under the various legal.
We should just name the case, if we can, since we know it.
Roberts.
Versus the Saverill V.O.E.
Board of Education.
Okay. As anticipated at this time, the above stated subject matters shall be made public at such time that the need for nondisclosure no longer exists, this resolution shall take effect immediately. Mr. Balka.
Yes.
Mrs. Pako.
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom.
Yes.
Mr. Brzezinski.
Yes.
Mr. Syak.
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto.
Yes.
Mrs. Trapp.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Saverill sadly said goodbye to Matthew Wellner, who recently passed tragically and unexpectedly. A class of 2008 Saverill War Memorial High School graduate, Matt was recognized for soccer prowess as a four-year varsity player. A scholar-athlete, Matt went on to play soccer at Rider University, obtaining a B.S. in Business and a Master's in Accounting. Later he earned his CPA and was employed as an auditor. Matt truly exemplified commitment and character, not only as an athlete, but as a peer leader as well. He was a role model to others, always smiling, laughing, and bringing joy to those around him. Matt wore a Saverill Bomber jersey proudly, and we are proud to say that he was a Bomber. He will without a doubt be missed, but the positive impact he had on all those around him will remain with us forever. Please join me in a moment of silence for Matthew Wellner. Thank you.
And now, Ms. Smar would like to say a few words. Good evening, Dr. Labby, Dr. Shadyek, Mrs. Reese, Mr. DeAndre, and members of the Board of Education. My name is Rashnit Zani, and I am here tonight representing Ms. Smar, Principal of Samson Upper Elementary School. I would like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to be part of this evening's Board of Education meeting. In the last couple of weeks, we have had the opportunity to learn about the roles and responsibilities of being a Board of Education member. We are happy to join members of our community tonight in making decisions about our school system. There were many exciting things that happened in our school this past month. In early March, we celebrated Read Across America, and then later in the month, the park assessments were administered. We are looking forward to spring recess, but all the books and field day. I would like to thank our teachers who came out to support us tonight. Mrs. Casman, Mrs. Zizik, Mrs. Fleischner, Mrs. Olbrich, Mrs. Rubio, Mrs. LaCour, Mrs. Delafave, and Mr. Lineman. Thank you, and thank you for your time.
I would like to call to order the March 31st meeting of the Saverill Board of Education. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Board Secretary, has this meeting been advertised in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act?
Yes, Mr. McEnamn.
Mr. Board Secretary, please take roll.
Mr. Balka.
Here.
Mrs. Pako. Mrs. Bloom. Mr. Brzezinski. Mr. Syak.
Here.
Mrs. DePinto.
Here.
Mrs. Trapp.
Here.
Mr. Walsh.
Here.
Mr. McEnamn.
Present.
Dr. Labby.
Here.
Mr. Superintendent, are there any presentations?
Yes, Mr. McEnamn.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. McEnamn. I'd like to begin with a special message from Mr. Pantaleo.
This school year, we are in the process of upgrading our security systems with card access and new and additional cameras in all of our schools. This summer, we will be re-roofing the A, C, and L wings at the high school. Due to budget constraints, all other projects were cut out of the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Pantaleano. And now, I'd like to talk about my park experience. Okay, so my experience with the park was excellent, actually. My only recommendation is that next time, we should have more questions with more time, or less questions with less time. Now, I'd like to go around the table and ask each board member what their experience was. How about you, Mr. Walsh?
My experience with the park test was okay. My recommendation is to... Is that the park test should be on everyone's grade level, and this year, it wasn't, so I want it to be better for children next year.
What about you, Mr. Brzezinski?
I think that the park was okay, but there was, on the math one, there was too much fractions, and that the math one was harder than language arts, and I think that we should keep the park on the computer. And I also think that we should have more questions because we're... We should have more questions because there's too much time. Like, for example, for the math one, they give you 85 minutes for like eight questions, so I think we should have more questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Pako.
In the park, I wish there were more questions, and I'd like to go back to the NJAS because especially in the math part, it was hard to type your solution up.
Good, how about you, Mrs. DePinto?
I thought the park was easy, and it was, actually, it was like, I thought it was, it wasn't that hard, and I think that they should just make less time because they have two less questions, but they have so much time to do them.
That's very interesting. Mr. McEnamn, what do you think?
I think that in the park, there were a lot of questions where you had multiple choice, and it was very easy, but some other questions, you had to type a lot, and they were very hard, so I feel that they should all be on the same level.
How about you, Mr. Syak?
For me, the park exam was good. It was not that hard or that easy. One thing that I think took long was logging in, and there was a lot of directions. Some questions were easy and some were hard. I think that all questions should be on the same level next time.
What do you think, Mrs. Trapp?
My experience was that it was easier than the NJAS because for the essay questions, you have unlimited amount of space, but for NJAS, you don't.
Do you agree with that, Mr. Balka?
Yeah.
What do you think?
They should give us less time for the same amount of questions.
I understand. How about you, Miss Reese?
Oh. I thought that the park was actually really easy, but I think that there could have been some people out there who didn't really know how to type, and that could have given them... That could have been unfair to them, so I recommend that we switch to the paper test.
Interesting. Mrs. Bloom, I'm sorry, I couldn't... I didn't see you there.
It's okay. My experience with the park exam was good. I thought it would be hard, but it was easy. I liked the park better than the NJAS, and I like how on the math questions, it tells to explain how you got your answer and also show your work.
Thank you. What do you think, Dr. Shadyek?
My park experience was good, but I recommend that they cut the time a little bit because I was sitting at my desk with nothing to do, and I had to check over my answers a lot, but otherwise, the login was a little bit complicated, and the test itself was easy to navigate.
Finally, Mr. DeAndrea.
My experience at the park was fine, but I think the navigation was a bit hard and the login, but I think we should stick to the paper test.
Very interesting. Thank you, everyone. For my final presentation, I'd like to talk to you about Read Across America. This year, my experience was with Read Across America was, as I said with the park, it was good, and, but, well, my class went with... We went to present with fourth graders, but that was really all we did, but it was very fun, and we... And after that, we had to create a Venn diagram with the fourth graders, which was also very fun. Does anyone else want to add with Read Across America?
I would like to add on it. My class, we got to do either book talks or poem, and I did a book talk with my friend Jessica R. on escaping the giant wave, and the book talk is when you tell about events that will get the reader hooked onto the book, so they can check it out and see if they like it. And it was really fun, so we got to do book talks for the fourth graders, and I really enjoyed it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd like to share my experience.
My experience for Read Across America was very fun because our class got to do twists on tall tales, which was Reader's Theater, and we did Cinderella Bigfoot and the real story of three little pigs.
I would also like to add something. We went to the fourth graders, and we read the Lorax, and we created really nice posters with like a line from the Lorax.
I would also like to add something. Our class, we decorated our doors as a theme of the book Warriors Into the Wild, and everyone made a little poster pretending that they were a cat, and we wrote the personality and the position we were in the clan, and we had a lot of fun with that.
I would like to add that we went to a fourth grade class and did a play, and we... The plays had stories that were familiar with everyone, except that they had plot twists, and we had a lot of fun doing that.
I would also like to add, I enjoyed the door decorating contest and seeing all of the doors. They looked like book covers from all the familiar books in the libraries, and I also liked the hat contest for the teachers.
Thank you, all Board of Education members, and Mr. McEnamn, that concludes my presentation.
I have something to add about Read Across America. I think it was amazing, although the fourth graders... I wish the fourth graders got to present something to the fifth graders, but they didn't, and what my class did was do a presentation on a poem, or do a book talk on a book, and for the book talk, you had to pick a book that you would recommend for the fourth graders to read, and tell why you want the fourth graders to read it, and why you thought it was interesting.
Great, thank you.
I would also like to add, for me, Read Across America was good. Our teacher made... We got to read a book, tell about the book that we read with a partner, or we could read a poem by ourselves, and we also did the door decorating for my switching class. Our teacher did it about this book called Where the Wild Things Are, and while she read it to us, we had to do a poster on what makes us wild.
That sounds wild. Anyone else? Then, Mr. McEnamn, that does conclude my presentation.
Every... Everyone should have reviewed the meeting minutes of the last meeting. Any comments, additions, or deletions?
I approve, we approve... Wait. I move we approve the minutes.
I need a second.
Second.
Mr. Board Secretary, please take a roll call vote.
Mr. Balka?
Yes.
Mrs. Pako?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Brzezinski?
Yes.
Mr. Syak?
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto?
Yes.
Mrs. Trapp?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
And Mr. McEnamn.
Yes.
Mr. Superintendent, please take us through your report.
Board of Education members, could I direct your attention to Vision A, Finance and Infrastructure? Item number one, approval of several non-public contracts with the M.R.E.S.C. effective July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2025, on page two. Number two, approval of facility usage fees for the remainder of 2014-15 school year in... You're on pages two to four. Number three, approval of the purchase of the 2016 Thomas 051 MS-24 passenger bus under Hunterdon County Educational Services. Commission award for bus bid number Trans 1304 in the amount of $52,558.76, I mean $67.00 on page four. Number five, 11 approval of several building permits, including two for the use of Eisenhower Field for a fee in accordance with the fee schedule on page four and five. Number 13, approval of several student trips with transportation costs on pages five and six. Number 10, approval of several out-of-district school tuition contracts for several students, including two at the M.R.E.S.C. interim alternative program, and the three bedside tutoring contracts on pages six and seven. Board of Education, any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
On number... Dr. Labby, on number five, under Buildings and Grounds, did you check the borough's ordinance as to the ending time of this meeting, of this event? Thank you.
Yes, we did.
Dr. Labby, I also...
It is a sound ordinance.
Thank you. Dr. Labby, I also have a question?
Yes.
On number 13, letter C, for what reason are they taking the field trip?
Dr. Shadyek, can you answer that?
For Read Across America, I would...
Thank you, Dr. Shadyek.
Isn't it all-day trip?
No.
Okay, thank you.
You are most welcome. Any more questions?
I also have a question.
Yes.
On number two, are the fees going up?
Actually, the fees are going down.
Thank you.
You're most welcome. Any more questions?
Um, is... When... What time is the bus leaving and returning for the tag trip?
Dr. Shadyek? Is it also overnight?
It's not overnight.
Thank you. We can get back to you. On the time of departure. Okay. If I could now direct your attention... To Vision 2030. Student achievement. Number one, approval of the admission of kindergarten student to Dwight D. Eisenhower School on page seven. Number two to four, approval of several co-curricular student activities on page eight. Any more questions? Seeing none? Can I direct your attention now? To Vision 2030 Personnel. Number one, acceptance of the retirement of Alexis Poplowski, school bus driver for the district on page eight. Now, I would like to read a special message about Alexis. Alexis Poplowski, also known as Lexi, has been employed as the Saverill bus driver since 1999. She is the mother of three children and Babsha, to four beautiful grandchildren. Lexi is a conscientious, caring employee. She has always gone beyond her duties to help anyone in need. Lexi will be sorely missed by her coworkers and students. We will still see Lexi around town doing her many volunteer activities with the borough. We will... We all want to wish Lexi a happy and healthy retirement. Number two, acceptance of the resignation... No, resign... Resignation of Lauren Scholl, grade one teacher at Arleth Elementary School on page eight. Number three, approval of several leaves of absence on pages eight and nine. Number four to five, approval to hire three non-certified and three certified staff members on page nine and 10. Number seven, six to seven, approval of a certificated substitute teacher and a nurse on page 10. Number 11, approval of professional days on page 11. Board of Education members, any questions?
Mr. DeAndrea, I will be abstaining on item six, C, number one.
Thank you so much, Mr. Brzezinski.
Anyone else? Mr. McEnamn, that concludes my presentation.
Good job, as always, Dr. Labby.
Thank you.
Do the board members have any questions? I would like to open up to the public. Does anyone want to come up about the agenda? If not, I will close the public portion. I need a motion to approve the superintendent's report.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Board Secretary, take a roll call vote.
Mr. Balka?
Yes.
Mrs. Patinko?
Oh, sorry.
Mrs. Pako?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Brzezinski?
Yes.
Mr. Syak? Syak.
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto?
Yes.
Mrs. Trapp?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. McEnamn?
Yes.
Delegate to the New Jersey School Board Association.
I attended the NJSPA Board of Directors' meeting on Friday, where the board adopted its annual budget. I am pleased to report that once again, there will be no increase in dues to any district, including Saverill. The association is working hard to raise money in other ways, and for the first time, less than 70% of the NJSPA's budget comes from dues. They're working to get 50%. In addition, I just returned from a national conference where I was elected secretary/treasurer of the National School Boards of Association. New Jersey has not had a school board member as an officer of the National Association in almost 50 years, and that is before both Mr. Syak's were born.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Syak.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any board discussion?
I would like to congratulate Mr. Syak on his election.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion?
Mr. DeAndrea, I have a question. Mr. Pantaleano talked about the elementary security system. Do you know if Eisenhower swipe cards are operational by now?
To indicate, I would have to check with Mr. Pantaleano to get the status.
to get the status. Thank you.
I was there the other day in my part. My card, and my card worked.
If there's no other questions, I would like to open up to the public again.
Good evening, Louis Santiago, twenty-three S and O. Uh, good evening, board members and, uh, future board members-to-be. Um, I just wanted to thank everybody for coming out this weekend, for the board members that could, and whoever could do the Spring Musical this weekend, and thank you very much, Mrs. Bloom, for the candy brand, it was very appreciated. Uh, Doctor Labby, just have a question, um, regarding social media. Um, over the recent weeks, I, uh, saw a couple of people from Old Bridge, and they were brought to my attention that their superintendent and their people have personal Twitter pages, and they actually tweet things out daily and respond to people and everything, so I wanted to see if there would be any way if we'd be able to ramp up our social media, because it's coming along well, but I think we should ramp it up more, get more stuff out there.
Thank you very much. I will work on that. The tough thing is finding the hours in the day to ramp it up. But I will do my best.
Okay, thank you. You guys are doing a great job, and you know, you guys work really hard, so good job for, uh, you know, earning your sway up here, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Louis.
Thank you.
Does anyone else from the public like to speak? Now, I would like to close the public session. I want to take a motion for a adjournment.
I move the adjournment.
Mister McEnom?
Yes.
May I ask? Mister Nurnberger? To come up and say a few words?
Absolutely.
Doctor Labby, Doc- Doctor Shadia, Mrs. Reese, Do- Mister DeAndrea, members of the board, my name is Marissa Scott, and I'm here tonight to represent Mister Nurnberger. Thank you for your participation, and let the children lead. It has been a memorable evening that we won't soon forget.
Can Ms. Mar come up and take a group photo?
Uh, I could take this motion, uh, this time, uh, this is about the fourth year that we've done this, and I, it's one of my favorite meetings, uh, I really enjoy it to have the fifth graders come, and, and as I look, you know, I always said to the board members the first time we did this, who's really smarter than the fifth grader? We got a bunch of smart kids, you can just see the way they're speaking and their assessment of the, of the podcast, which weren't scripted by the board, that's just their own assessments of it, and, uh, again, um, I always point to the good things that come out of the S U S, uh, it's reflective of the leadership in that building, and we certainly appreciate the time and effort, uh, it took to put this together, so thank you very much for having the board.